Trustee Clark, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Blau, would you call the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Drapka?
Present at counted for.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Present.
Supervisor Wilt?
Present, and trustee Luckford asked to be excused, he's out of town.
And let the record know clerk Blau is in attendance.
Thank you. You have in your packets the minutes of January 8th, the board meeting on January 8th. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the minutes. I have one small correction, Leanne, which I don't really know if it's that such a big deal, but on page two, on the second to the last paragraph where it says trustee noted the senior drop-in is tomorrow, in the second line, she also noted that normally at this time of year, a community event is planned such as a musical, that should probably be a music show.
Okay.
Which I know is very small, thank you.
Any other additions or corrections? I have a motion.
I have a correction also, if you go right below that.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Wait, Tim Wade has a correction.
I know. Just a second, so that we can open for discussion. Thank you. Yes.
Under mental health report, you have SSRA, it's W-S-S-R-A.
Same page.
Oh, I did really great on these.
They're not huge.
Wonderful job.
I have one on the first page, too, under supervisors' report, second bullet point, first sentence, township will be celebrating its 125th anniversary and the sesquicentennial.
You want "and" put in there?
Yeah, because it's 125th anniversary of the building and 150th anniversary of the township.
Yeah, the first part is regarding the building. Any other additions or corrections? You've gone a long time without getting corrections, so you're okay.
But isn't the building this year? Because in 2019, because the village is doing a whole big thing.
So the building, the cornerstone was laid in later part of this year. It didn't actually come into use until the beginning of the following year, so we're really close on that.
Okay. So we're changing the motion as corrected. I correct trustee Clark?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Are you still seconding?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka? Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Call the roll on it.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Then you have the minutes of the special budget meeting with discussions of direction for the coming year. What is your pleasure on those?
I make a motion we approve the special board budget meeting of January 28, 2019.
I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach to approve the minutes of January 28, special budget meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Clark. Any discussion or additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Figure there was no corrections or anything. Very good. Are there any communications?
No.
That's great.
Oh, there was a communication and I didn't bring it out here. It was a thank you note from, oh, I left it in my inbox, I apologize.
We have a thank you note.
I'll do it next month.
All right. Thank you. Then are there any visitors' remarks exclusive of the grant requests? We will be moving to those. Yes.
Good evening, I am Fran Sifwitz, and I'm here as my capacity as Riverside Township assessor to report on a couple of things happening property tax-wise. We are in the appeal process right now with the Cook County assessor's office. They'll be taking our appeals from Riverside Township through March 7. This is the third year in the triennial reassessment, so next year is our next reassessment. So usually at this point in time, if people have been appealing over the last two years, we sometimes have a hard time finding comparables to support a case of lack of uniformity, so we do the best we can to make everyone happy. So my office will remain open on Monday, February 18, when the township offices will be closed. We're really busy, so I just think we need to be open at that time. We are having an outreach in conjunction with the Cook County Commissioner Sean Morrison, and that's going to be happening here on February 26, from 6 to 8 p.m. I'm also having evening appointments tomorrow night, and probably another night, we'll see how things go. We're just trying to accommodate as many of our residents as possible. We are continuing to take exemption applications from seniors, new homeowners for the homeowner exemption, disabled veterans exemptions, and disabled homeowner exemptions. So that's what's happening at the assessor's office.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thanks for being open, that's great.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Call for appointments?
Yes.
Call for appointments.
Call for appointments.
Very good, thank you. Any other remarks? Then we will move into new business and grants are first. The first grant on the agenda is the Riverside Fire Department request for AED machines. This is to replace two that are currently in service but aging quickly.
I make a motion that we approve the grant for the Riverside Fire Department for $3,889.78 for two new AEDs.
I second it.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Hollenbach, to award the grant requested by the Riverside Fire Department in the amount of $3,889.78. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next grant is Aging Care Connections for Aging Well Month. Do we have a representative here? Would you like to step up and see if there's any questions that any of the trustees might have?
I have a little statement prepared also.
Great.
The fire department did so great, I'm afraid to talk. My name is Linda Hossi, and I am the Aging Well Month coordinator, and I'm with Aging Care Connections. The proposal before you is to be part of funding for Aging Well Month 2019. The month is in May, it also coincides with Old Americans Month. The Township of Riverside has generally supported this month since 2015, is a month-long series of programs, activities to help older adults to age well and to age in place. During the month, we also honor older adults that are volunteering in their communities and making their communities great places to age well. Over the years, our all volunteer Aging Well Month Committee has expanded the number of programs and the number of older adults taking advantage of the information that's available through the whole month at no cost to the participant. And some of you might remember it used to be a week, and it's a month, it's a month-long series of events now. Two years ago, we started a partnership with the Landmark Newspaper to help better reach the Riverside Township residents, and in 2015, 55 older adults from Riverside Township took advantage of at least one program during the month, and several went to multiple programs. That's up from 47 in 2017, and so again, if we work more with the Landmark, we see that number increasing. During the same time period also, there were 68 programs that were conducted this last May, and 14 of those programs were in Riverside Township. Alison Scanlon, who's a resident of Riverside, makes sure that this area is covered well. She's fantastic. And also during 2018, 19 older adults from Riverside Township were honored for their volunteer efforts in the communities to make their community great places to age well. And there's a Mr. Kowiski that was nominated and honored, he was one of the most notable ones of the nine. And I'd like to encourage all of you to think about older adults that you know of that are in their communities making them great places to age well. I did bring some applications, and I'd be happy to leave them on the back table. All nominees are honored at the Aging Well Month kickoff on May 1, and so everyone that's nominated is honored. We want to make sure that if you think someone's making a difference, that we take time to honor them. Thank you for your generosity, and I of course hope that the Riverside Township decides to be part of this month-long celebration and empowerment of older adults.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I actually do have a question.
Sure.
How far does your organization reach out? Is it only in Cook County? Is it the western suburbs? Is it?
Aging Care Connections for Aging Well Month.
Aging Month Connections.
So Aging Care Connections. Aging Care Connections. We serve South Proviso, Riverside, and Lyons Township, all of our services, but then we do have some contracts for caregiver support up in Lyden and Nordwood Townships. So it's 38 communities, but 23 Riverside, really Riverside, South Proviso, and Lyons Township is where all of our services are provided. And the state really cuts out the geography, so.
Okay, because I've noticed on your board that a lot of people that are service board members seem to be outside that area. Is that?
Maybe their employment is, but they, although, okay, so there's one that's in Downers Grove that I can think of, and one in Chicago, but then their employment, many of them, their employment's in our service area. Or is there someone you'd like to point out?
So they either live in the area or they live in the area.
I'm sorry, yes. Lower work.
Okay, that's what.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, what is your pleasure on this grant?
Make a motion to grant this grant.
I second.
The motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Drapka, to award this grant in the amount of $1,500 for Aging Care, Aging Well Month.
Thank you very much.
Would you call the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming out in this nasty weather.
Next up is the Riverside Arts Weekend, and I think we have someone to speak to that as well.
Just want to thank the board for their past support, generous support of Raj. If you have any questions, I think we're pretty familiar with how the weekend goes.
Okay.
And we're not going to talk about the weather until after the event.
All right. Are there any questions regarding this grant? And this is Jill Mateo, who's speaking today.
No, sorry.
That's all right.
Jill, I didn't see a date on here, is it the 17th and 18th?
18th and 19th this year, I believe.
Oh, 19th, yeah, Saturday and Sunday.
Right, the weekend before Memorial Day.
It's a great, it's a great event. It draws so many people.
It does.
And I think we should be proud to sponsor something like this. So if anybody else doesn't have any other questions, I'll make a motion to approve this grant for $1,400 for the Riverside Arts Weekend.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the grant of $1,400 for Riverside Arts Weekend. Any discussion? No questions? Very good. Then clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next year, I'll be sure the date is on the application.
Thank you. All right, our next grant request is from Hauser Junior High for the Cougar Advance Program. Good evening.
Good evening, hi, my name is Matt Muto. I am an eighth grade social studies teacher at Hauser Junior High, and I also coordinate the Cougar Advance Field Trip. I believe this is the ninth year we're taking our eighth graders on this trip. It's a three-day, two-night trip to Bradford Woods, Indiana, where the students have an opportunity to do a couple things. One, this outdoor education where they're able to challenge themselves, take on leadership skills, and really work together well as a team. This involves high ropes courses and low ropes courses. Some of the events they do, they do things like raft building, where they're literally given like a bunch of 50-gallon drums and two-by-fours of rope and told, build a raft, and they see if it floats, and then get on one by one. As a social studies teacher, it's really awesome to get to see them like work together outside the classroom and kind of see that dynamic. So there's that part of it, you know, having a good support system and their friends and learning how to take healthy risks. There's also a component of this field trip that deals with informing students about the dangers of drugs and alcohol, especially as we prepare them as they continue to get older and move on to high school next year. And so we have speakers come in. This year, we have lined up a DEA agent from the Indianapolis office will come in and talk about what he sees on the streets, and then also we have people that come in from local drug and rehab centers to talk about their own struggles with drugs and alcohol. This is a really memorable event for our eighth graders. I have students that come back from time to time from high school, and this is the first thing that they talk to me about. We have just over 200 eighth graders, and our goal is for all of them to go. Not all of them do, but usually it's upwards of about 90 percent. The cost, the total cost to go per student is $299, which is a lot of money, we realize that, to cover transportation and the whole event and food and whatnot. And so the grant that I really appreciate you taking the time to consider us for goes to helping people that need financial assistance to go on that trip.
And your goal would be to provide 10 students that possibility of 50 percent scholarship for it.
Let me ask you this, so I got a question, can I ask some questions?
Go right ahead.
So my question is, are there more than 10 families that usually have problems?
Typically.
So then what are you doing with the overflow?
So I have to reach out elsewhere to try to get other donations, whether that be from PTOs and PTAs from other elementary schools. I sent out last week maybe 80 letters to local community businesses asking for support. So we try to drum up as much as we can to help provide support for, it's really difficult for me to tell exactly how many students are going to need support, as I'm in the process right now where parents are contacting me about that, and forms and fees are due in the middle of March. But in the last few years, we've had more than 10 students that have asked for financial aid.
Were you like 15, 20, or what?
The two, last year was 12 students, two years ago was 13 students.
So then the scholarship that you find from here or elsewhere, you only cover 50 percent, right?
Yeah, I mean, we don't want the financial burden to be the reason why a student can't go. So typically, we start by offering 50 percent. Also, different types of payment plans that we can potentially offer where parents are able to pay a chunk, you know, over the course of time before graduation. There are some situations where we do offer more than 50 percent scholarship. It's kind of up to our administration.
What's your response from the letters that you send out?
It varies by year. I would say that typically, I get maybe four or five businesses will donate, anywhere from $25 to 100.
Does that cover your costs?
It has in the past, yeah.
Well, I make a motion for this grant on the providing the service, the wonderful service that you're doing for the people that can't afford to go, and maybe you should ask for more money next year.
There you go.
Didn't know I could.
You absolutely can.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
And I have a second by trustee Hollenbach, to award the $1,500 grant to Hauser Junior High for the Cougar Advance Program. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Blau, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you for your spark.
Thank you.
Keep in mind what trustee Drapka recommended, okay?
All right. By the way, we aren't going to interrupt the meeting tonight, but if any of you would like a photo opportunity, if there's, if you think you could get more support by having a photo taken with a big presentation check, we'll do that after the meeting tonight, if you can stick around. Our next grant request is from Beds Plus Care. Is there anyone here to speak to that one? All right. You have their application before you. My question would have been how they identify 104 clients from Riverside Township if some of these are homeless, but it's prevention assistance, so it's interesting that there's that many that they help within the township.
Do we want to put this on hold and see if we can get a person to come in next month?
It's a big dollar amount, I agree with you 100 percent.
Yeah, because it's an increase from what they were asking, well, in the past five years.
Yeah, plus it's out of the township.
Yeah. I make a motion that we table this unless there's a representative here.
I'll second that.
I have a mo-
And we send them a letter of correspondence, you know, requesting that they come and answer some questions.
Okay, and then you would consider it at the next meeting if they'll?
That's correct.
Okay. I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Hollenbach, to defer the consideration to table this, reach out to them and see if they would come and explain their position a little bit better because of the amount of the grant requested. Would you please take the roll on that?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. We now have a grant request from Best Buddies International.
Hello, first and foremost, I would like to thank the township board for your support last year.
Trustee yourself.
Support last year. My name is Adam Wilt, and I'm the state director for Best Buddies Illinois, and I wanted to thank the township board for your support last year for our Friendship Walk, which has moved locations since last year. However, we've been really excited about some of the programs that we've been able to implement right here within Riverside Township. Last year, over the past year, we've been able to partner and expand our programs in the township. Last year, as you may have remembered, we had a program at Riverside Brookfield High School. That program has been a strong chapter of ours for many years now, and we actually expanded this year to Hauser Junior High. It was wonderful to see just some of the numbers we had. We have 60 students who are part of that program, including seven one-to-one friendships, so that would be 14 individuals matched in one-to-one friendships as part of our program, which what we do is really focus on the power of friendship and pairing those with intellectual and developmental disabilities to those without a disability, and really to promote inclusion within schools throughout the state of Illinois. We are actually in the process of working on expansion for the coming year, and your support can definitely be, would definitely be very helpful in helping to reach out to some of the elementary schools in the area, specifically within the township where we could start promoter chapters. We found that some of the strongest districts that support Best Buddies tend to have a progression from elementary school all the way through high school, and this, your support has been very instrumental in helping to support that.
So I have a question. So our grant that we awarded you last year allowed you to begin a chapter at Hauser?
Yes.
And, well, that's awesome.
Yes.
Because you already had one at RB.
Yes.
So because of us, we're at a perfect.
And actually, one thing too, is the event specifically that you supported, part of that conversation really progressed because of the Friendship Walk event last year, so.
So now you're asking for this year's grant, and you're looking to extend it to other schools within the township.
Yes, and we are in conversations with some schools already.
I make a motion that we approve this grant.
I have a, wait, I have a question.
Yeah.
This is actually for, yeah, how is this, you work at Hauser, this is, you know, at Hauser, how is this going?
It's fantastic, yeah. A colleague of mine and a good friend of mine, Caitlin Stacey, is the one who helps with that program, and it's amazing to see both the students that have the needs and also the students that maybe don't have the physical needs, and they come together and it's like, it's awesome. It's a really cool scenario, and Hauser's better for having it, for sure.
And then Adam, so is this walk going to be downtown this year?
So the walk is going to be downtown. We still draw participation from around the Chicago area. I put that in there because obviously that would be a vehicle to receive some promotional benefits from the support from the township. Obviously, if you prefer, obviously, the donation, that would be kindly accepted as well. However, I did want to provide that opportunity again. One of the things that is included with that is the presence on the event tee-shirt, which you received last year, and that's always a great thing and a nice thing of pride for the students who are coming from Riverside Township to be able to say and see that their township has supported that event. But again, obviously, the support goes to the same place and really will help us with our school and program expansion throughout the state, yeah, township.
One more question, once again, I'm not seeing a date on here of when the walk is.
It's, where it says when in the top, middle of the page, I believe that you're looking at.
Oh, it just says spring 2012.
It says spring 2014. I apologize. I believe in the email that I did send, it is April 14, and that is a, was pending Soldier Field approval at the time, that will be at Soldier Field. So that packet actually was not updated yet. We've just received final permission from them. The permitting process at Soldier Field is quite complex, so we're in the middle of that right now.
All right, so it'll be April 14?
Yes, April 14.
A Sunday.
And that is a Sunday, yes. It wasn't our first choice of a date, we would like something a little later, when hopefully it'll be warmer, but we're hoping and planning for a beautiful day, so we'd love for you to join us.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I mean, go.
I have a motion, but I don't think, we have a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Clark. Then we have a motion and a second to approve the grant of $2,500 to Best Buddies International. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
I'm totally in favor of this, but I'm going to abstain so it wouldn't look like this is my son, folks.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it's a great program, Adam.
Our next grant for consideration is for Access to Care, and you may remember that this was a question that came up in our budget discussion because we didn't know much about it, and lo and behold, within two days, I had a call from them about something, so.
Yes, this was a very quick turnaround.
Right.
I was trying to put something together and come in. Well, good evening, my name is Kimberly Mertz, and I am the Director of Operations for Access to Care. Access to Care has been around for 31 years. I've been there for 29 years, so almost from the very beginning. Access to Care provides primary health care for low-income, uninsured, and underinsured residents of suburban Cook County. I think with the Affordable Care Act, a lot of people thought that our program would not be needed anymore, but unfortunately, we have found that even after almost nine years, I think we're into this, 1 in 10 residents of Cook County that are at 300 percent of poverty or less still do not have medical- have medical benefits. So, we continue to do what we have now done for thirty years, and we provide three main pieces, the ability to see a primary care doctor for five dollars, the ability to receive lab and radiology services for five dollars a test, and then prescription medication for fifteen to forty dollars for a thirty-day supply, and that is available on an unlimited as-needed basis, and has kind of been the core of Access to Care for thirty years. Uh, we have just added a couple changes for this year, uh, in that we are offering basic behavioral health services, so we started a pilot program last year, and in December, our board decided to make it a permanent piece of the Access to Care program as an extension of primary health care. So our members can now see a clinical psychologist, uh, they can see up to eight sessions for five dollars a session, and then they are charged on a sliding scale. Um, in addition to that, we made some changes to our pharmacy benefits, actually, as of February one, just this month, uh, we now are covering addiction and substance abuse medications, we have an opioid management program that we are, are working on, and we're able to provide flu and pneumonia vaccines now for free. So, we're really excited to be adding these extra pieces, uh, as an extension of primary health care, and, and really in line with what the current trends are for primary health care. Uh, we don't receive any federal funding, and we don't receive any state funding, so our primary funder is Cook County Health, and then the municipalities and the townships that we serve. Um, since our inception in nineteen eighty-eight, we have served over a hundred and twenty thousand unduplicated individuals, last year, there were just under five thousand, and sixteen of them were residents from Riverside Township, um, so I wanted to thank supervisor Wilt for having me, and, um, for anyone taking an interest in the Access to Care program. Does anybody have any questions? I know that's kind of the, the two-minute summary.
Your elevator speech.
It is the elevator speech, definitely.
I, I have a few.
Absolutely.
Um, your clinical psychology, your, uh, behavioral, uh, do you go through a, a service for that?
Yes, actually, two different services, um, we work with presence, uh, and they actually go to one of our clinics, we have a contract with, uh, Loyola, a primary care clinic, and we have a clinical psychologist onsite there that covers about a thousand patients, uh, we also work with Sci, uh, Sci Synergy, and they do behavioral health either in person, or they can do it through video or phone, um, we've actually had a lot of people, um, liking the idea of doing it over the phone, um, we've had a huge response to that, so yes, we use those two services.
And for your drug addiction?
Uh, that is actually through our PBM, um, we are now using Serview, uh, as our pharmacy manager, and so they have added those drugs to our formulary, and then they do an opioid management, so that they are watching the fills, uh, making sure that the physicians aren't over, over prescribing, making sure that, uh, patients aren't trying to get it from two or three different resources, uh, making sure that it's in line with the recommended dosage, you know, back in the day, if you had a back injury, you'd go to the doctor and they'd maybe give you a thirty-day supply, well, they don't do that anymore, they're not supposed to, uh, if you have a back injury, you're supposed to get a seven-day supply, and then you're reassessed, so, um, it's really keeping track of what people are trying to fill and what is being filled, is, is part of that management program.
What is PBM?
Uh, your prescriber benefit manager, so they are the ones that, um, are keeping track of who is filling what where, uh, not only the patients, but then the physicians that are prescribing.
Do you provide any counseling for these, uh, for drug addiction or anything like that, do you have a program?
We don't right now, um, we refer to some of the other organizations that, that do that, uh, we don't have a piece of that as, as part of our contractual agreement with Access to Care right now.
Okay.
So you, uh, you said that there were sixteen residents of Riverside Township out of the five thousand that you served last year?
Yes.
So, does that roll over and continue into this year, or is that, because you're asking for a grant to allow you to enroll eight residents?
Right, so if, yeah, so the grant would allow, you know, half of what we have seen in the past twelve months. Everyone can enroll on any day, at any month, and any time, so we don't have an enrollment period, and once you are enrolled in the Access to Care program, your enrollment is good for twelve months, until you are reassessed to see if you are still eligible, so it would just be based on, you know, if we were to receive the grant today, I would look at the next eight people that were eligible for the program from Riverside Township and apply it to them.
What is your service area?
It's all of suburban Cook County.
And you get support from other townships for that?
We do, yes, um, I don't know if it's included in what I sent to you.
I think it is. I think it is, I'm just trying to remember what I read and what I heard.
No, it's okay, and I did, um, because it was such short notice, I had, was scanning things and sending them to you, but I also have packets for everyone, that includes our annual report and, and some other information that may not have been provided.
It's on page ten of the, of the-
Right, okay.
Annual report of two thousand seventeen, so a lot of townships do support this.
Very good, then what is your pleasure, are, are there any other questions?
So this five thousand would allow eight residents of Riverside Township to enroll for a twelve-month period?
Correct.
I make a motion to pass the, a grant of five thousand dollars to Access to Care.
I have a motion by trustee Clark to grant five thousand dollar, uh, request.
I'll second it.
And a second by trustee Heilenbach, any further discussion? Then clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Supple Spirit.
Hi, good evening, uh, my name's Howie Maskill, I'm representing Supple Spirits, uh, we've been in the community for over ninety years, uh, providing affordable programming for the community in areas of physical fitness, as well as social and educational and cultural programs, uh, the grant that we're asking for is to help offset costs for our annual show, which will be held at Riverside Brookfield High School on March twenty-third, and, uh, thank you for your consideration.
Uh, I have a question, so, um, you received this last year, and, uh, you received a grant last year that, that you asked for, um, and that helped you out with everything, everything was fine at RB, I know you provide the services in Brookfield, but a lot of residents in Riverside Township-
Yeah.
-have been supporting your-
It, it definitely helped out a lot, um, and in recent years, we've had to move to, to that venue, which is a little more costly than, um, the venue that we've used in the past, um, but we really want to focus on keeping it in the community, so, um, in order to offset that cost, the grant, the grant last year was very helpful, thank you very much.
I make a motion that we approve the grant.
Wait, another question?
Oh, yeah, okay.
What type of show is this?
So, it's, it's a show that, um, allows us to promote our programming in the community, but also our students to kind of showcase what they've learned throughout the year through, uh, gymnastics routines and, and dance numbers and things like that.
I make a motion that we approve the grant.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka?
I second it.
And a second by trustee Heilenbach, any further questions? Then, uh, clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Once again, I'm an active participant in this, so I will abstain, but I'm very glad that you support it.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that is the, the conclusion of our grants, next up is the approval of room requests for special use. First one is a request for a private party by myself. For my daughter's bridal shower.
A hundred and fifty people there?
Well, this is, you know, they've got three hundred people coming to the wedding, it could be that, I, I'm hoping it won't be, but that's the capacity of the room.
You'll have two hundred.
Yeah, I don't-
I make a motion that we let Vera have her bridal shower, her ear.
I have a motion to approve this request, do I hear a second?
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, second by trustee Drapka, to approve the request for the use of the auditorium on Saturday, May fourth, by the Wilt family. Any further questions? Okay, then, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Obviously, I'm abstaining, thank you very much.
Motion is carried.
Next request is from the Riverside Swim Club for their event on May eleventh, which would be their annual adult social casino night themed, and it would be for the use of the auditorium and the kitchen.
Is there anybody here from the swim club? Are they going to actually do the gambling?
I think they bring in a-
A vendor.
A vendor that does that.
Okay, does that need to have a license by the state or the Cook County or something?
Right, and usually those vendors take care of it.
The vendors take care of that.
They do, okay, so we don't have to worry then about that.
So I'm, I'm, I'm confused here, are they, they are serving alcohol at this, correct? Um, it's not listed, but I'm, I'm assuming that, right?
Yes.
Because they have the rental fee here, the deposit, and then their, the admission being charged, right? So they're, they're, they're- Does anybody know for sure, do you know for sure?
Well, I know there'll be alcohol there, whether they, uh-
Serve it or BYOB.
Or, or, or it's, uh, bring your own, it might be bring your own.
Can we get just clarification on that, just 'cause, I mean, I mean, we can approve, I, I have no problem approving it either way, okay, but I-
And if they are serving alcohol, they do need to get the, the-
Liquor license.
Right, right.
And the insurance, we're still going to need the insurance if there's alcohol being served.
Yes.
I just, I just noticed that it's not on there, I would assume that it being a casino night, there's probably alcohol involved, but, um, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve it regardless, I mean, but I just want to toss it out there, there's something to be aware of, that it was not listed there, that we probably-
Very good.
Assume that it's the swim club, that there's going to be alcohol involved.
You know what happens when you assume, right?
Right, exactly, but they, you know, love to party, so...
We'll take your word for it.
That was a song, too.
So we have a motion by trustee Drapka, do I hear a second?
So, you know, we just amend the motion that-
Sure, what do you want to amend?
They, uh, proper with the, if they're going to serve alcohol or bring your own, that they get the proper, uh, insurance.
And licensing.
And licensing.
How about I withdraw my motion, then you can make the motion, I'll second the motion, how about that?
Uh, we can do that?
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a move that we approve the Riverside Swim Club's Casino Night on May eleventh, uh, two thousand nineteen, as long as they're planning to have alcohol, whether they bring it, sell it, or people BYOB, that they get the proper insurance and licensing.
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, second by trustee Drapka, to approve the request from the Riverside Swim Club with the proviso that if alcohol is involved, that the proper insurance and licensing is, um, effectuated. Clerk Blau, would you call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Our next request is from the Riverside Junior Women's Charity, this event has been held here in the past, you will note that right now, the rental fee is zero, because that's how it was, if, uh, we read this correctly, the typical fees on this would be a hundred and fifty dollar rental for the auditorium and a fifty dollar deposit for that, plus fifty dollar rental, so that would be two hundred dollars in rent and a fifty dollar deposit that would be refundable if there's no harm to the building, and there is no alcohol involved in this one.
Breakfast with Santa, I don't think is going to be adding much alcohol.
No, that's all that Santa brings.
So it should be the rental fee is fifty?
No, it's one hundred and fifty for the auditorium and fifty for the use of the kitchen.
Okay.
So it'd be two hundred total rental and fifty dollar deposit.
I have a couple of questions, Ms. McHale, it, it says you've got four hundred people here that are participating, are you doing it in shifts?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We have an eight-thirty and a ten o'clock.
Okay.
Because we couldn't accommodate that many here.
Yeah, that's exactly right, okay. I, I, I understand it's your, your Junior Women's Charity, but you are charging a, a, a ten dollar cover to cover expenses?
Correct.
Uh, I, I, I really do think that the rental fee should be in, enforced on this, it's, you know, they're, they're charging.
We don't make any money off of this event, this is one of our community service events, it's not one of our, we have community service events and we have fundraisers, and this is a community service one, it's not for-
So the cost of the breakfast is pretty much that, that ten dollar fee?
Do they get a gift or anything like that?
We, we, we have food for the families, we have games, so our expenses are for the food, the decorations, the games, and then for Santa Claus.
Did the, uh, did the Riverside Junior Women, didn't, didn't you guys hold a, uh, event here, or are they holding an event here?
They normally, they held this event here in the past, but in the past, we did not have a rental schedule, and that's why I'm calling your attention to that, they've held this very event here.
I mean, I mean a dinner or some kind of fundraiser, did you have some?
We are having one, and thank you for letting us advertise that, April sixth, we're having our third annual bus cruise, that's one of our, that's our only fundraiser this year, and that's going to be-
So, oh, you're not having it here, though?
It's going to be in the auditorium.
Oh, it is having it.
Uh, you, you know that we haven't gotten the application yet.
The bus cruise, he's talking about the bus cruise.
Right.
That's not here.
I mean, we've got it penciled in because somebody called about it, but we don't have the application yet.
I will rectify that, because I was not, that was not my understanding, so thank you for that.
Thank you, yeah, I was called to my attention today.
You're from the train station, don't you?
We're expanding.
Okay.
It's been very successful, tickets sell out within twenty-four hours, so if anybody is interested, get those tickets as soon as they go on sale.
So just for clarification, you are having an event, a fundraising event here at the hall?
If it is approved, yes, that is our plan.
And I understand that that's going to happen a month from today, that-
Yeah.
In April.
Since we don't have it yet.
Too much, yeah.
Right.
No, but I mean, the approval, the approval.
They have a service in April.
I appreciate finding out about this, I think.
And at that point, at, at that juncture, your understanding of the rental fees and all that thing, right? For that, for, okay, and this is different, because this is a, a charity event, right?
A service event, yeah.
Service.
Service event.
I think you're thinking, did you apply before Jill, and it was canceled for some reason?
No.
Oh, no?
And the reason we're submitting for a December event now is Mrs. Claus is really eager to get us on the books, because they really enjoy doing this event.
How, how many years have you been doing the Breakfast with Santa here?
Uh, at least ten years, if not more, probably before I started in juniors.
But, it, this, it's Breakfast with Santa, but it's open to everybody in Riverside, is that correct?
Yes.
So, um, I'm not really sure how it's a service to people.
I don't have kids, but the parents who say, "Thank, thank you for not making me go to the mall and wait in line for my kids to have a picture taken with Santa," they think that's a service, it's-
So it's an event, but not a fundraiser, basically, it's barely a break-even.
For anybody, originally, we probably didn't charge, um, I don't know the history of when we started charging five dollars a child, ten dollars a child, but because we are providing food for the kids and for the parents, we have to charge a little bit just to recoup those expenses.
So in fact, that ten dollars, if you have fifty children who come with two parents, it's actually, you're actually feeding three for that, is that what you're saying?
I don't know how much the parents-
Because it says ten dollars per child to cover expenses.
Parents probably drink the coffee and the kids eat all the other stuff.
Okay, the kids eat the breakfast, okay.
Yep. Yep.
I don't know, this doesn't, um, if we don't whether we should ju- charge them the rental fee.
They've held it here for a number of years without the fee, I'll just call that to it.
That's, that's the thing.
Yeah.
You know what, it's a service thing, you know, I, I, I at first thought it was to, you know, to, to charge the fee, they've been doing it here for, for so many years. It's a nice thing for the community, it's a nice thing for the township residents. I, I, you know, we're gonna get enough of these, I think we should do something nice for some of these organizations, if it's a service that they're providing, I think it's, you know, good for the community, so.
They also meet here regularly, they meet here every month, and they have a little corner of the, in the basement with storage of some of their goods, so.
A smaller corner now, I can show you the picture.
Thank you, we appreciate that, it was getting a little unwieldy.
So, I make a motion to, uh, waive the, uh, waive the, uh, the fees for the township hall and, uh, let the Riverside Junior, uh, Women's Charity hold their breakfast with Santa Claus.
I have a motion by trustee Highlandbach to waive the fees and allow the, uh, the use of the hall on December 14th.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, and would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and I will get on the bus cruise committee right away.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought, I heard about that, I thought that-
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was penciled in, but today, when I was going over this with staff, I, it was called to my attention that although it was orally requested, the form was still not coming.
As we speak.
Okay, thank you very much. Onto item C, which is the proposal for installation of building-wide Wi-Fi. Uh, we had the, um, I guess we started with our internet provider and then went from there as to how we could boost the service throughout this building, and there's certainly been plenty of us who have lamented the fact that we don't have very good Wi-Fi service here, and even if we give people the code, it, the, the signal's weak. So, this would bring, uh, five access points through the building, it would provide for, um, a box like you see in that picture, it's a, it's the white one that's farther in, it's a, a flat, it's about a one-inch thick box, it's, uh, this one, the Sisto, the Cisco Maraki, uh, it would go into each room and it would go near the ceiling, it would be pretty unobtrusive, and it would, uh, this would include all of the cabling, they're going to use some of the access points for other work that's been done in the building, including any security cameras and phone lines and things like that, so they would run through those same areas. And this, the, the two proposals you have, one is a three-year, uh, cloud subscription and one is a five-year cloud subscription, so it's only a minimal, minimal amount more for the five-year, um, and otherwise, everything is the same on both of these. I will try to answer your questions, although I don't know that I know as much as I'd like to. Are there any questions about this proposal?
Is this the only estimate you got?
It is the only estimate, we just barely squeaked in to get this information, we've, they've been working on putting it together for a while, I can solicit others if you like, now that we know what we're looking for, um-
I personally would like to see at, at least one or two more estimates.
I agree, I agree with that.
Very well, we will defer that until we have more to compare. Thank you. Next is, uh, information that was received from the ITAS CSC, not a great acronym, uh, that's, that is the Illinois Township Association of Senior Citizen Services Committees, and they were soliciting membership, it's not something that we've apparently participated in before, but we do have senior programs, so I thought it might be worth your consideration.
I have a question, trustee Clark, what do you think about this?
I'm kinda wondering what it's gonna do for us. Um, you know, I looked at this once before, and, um, that was before we did some of the senior programs that we do now, um, and, um, previously, I didn't think this would really help us. So, I'm not sure, and I still, I'm not sure really what you're gonna do for us.
Okay, just wanted to bring it to your attention, just in case.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Sir?
Can we, uh, can we keep this on file and revisit it next year at this time?
Sure.
And maybe make this a yearly kind of reevaluation?
They usually have a table at the, um, annual meeting in Springfield, don't they?
Yes, what, yeah, they, uh, they do, um, so, and I've been to, I think that they had pulled, helped, uh, when we go to those seminars and classes and stuff, I think I have been to one there, um, I wasn't able to go to TOI this past year, so I, I'd like my suggestion-
Sure.
-that, uh, we put this on hold.
Very good.
And then just maybe come back to it, 'cause we may be in a different spot next year, you know, I mean, who knows where, what next year brings us, you know?
Right, and I know a lot of this is targeted to, um, townships are a little larger than ours.
Right, that's what I see on your list of members, yeah.
Um, offer, you know, lunch every day for their seniors and a lot more things, but I'd be willing to reevaluate next year.
All right. Very good, thank you for your consideration of that, and we will move along to our next item, we have the engagement letter from Selden Fox, it is the exact same amount, same cost as we contracted for this year, and I've found them good and easy to work with, so I present this for your consideration and permission to go forward with contracting Selden Fox for our annual audit, and other, they take care of other matters as well.
I made a motion that we accept this, uh, fee of eight thousand four hundred dollars?
Yes.
Uh, to engage Selden Fox for our annual audit.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Clark, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
And I have a second by trustee Highlandbach, any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Good, thank you. Next on the agenda is the supervisor's report. I looked into, our, we had discussion in our last meeting about the Township officials of Cook County Township Day, and one of the, um, the items that was discussed was a shredding event, the event would be held on June 15th, I did some research, I've found midway document destruction provides the onsite shredding that we could provide as part of that township day. I've been quoted a community discount price of seven hundred and twenty dollars for a six-hour event with two men on premises, I contacted several others, but none of them did the shredding onsite, they all wanted to pack it in a truck and drive it away, and I don't think people like to see that. So, I believe that, um, you know, this would be the better way to go, they've done this kind of, this company has done this kind of event with many Chicago wards for the aldermen, and they've also done Oak Park and other nearby communities, so, uh, they're familiar with the area, I've also connected with Hauser Junior High, and I have, um, I, they've penciled us in already, and they sent me a form, which is a very basic form, uh, there would be no cost to us, and they would be happy, they, they're just double-checking that there's no, they don't think there's any blacktop going on or anything like that in the parking lot, but they would be most happy to allow us to use that if you still want me to go forward with that.
And, I'm sorry, how much did you say it was?
It's seven hundred and twenty dollars, uh, if, there's probably a little bit of wiggle room in that yet, if I say, "Oh, I really can't," but, um, uh, that provides two people onsite for the full six-hour event, we're looking at probably, um, I think we said-
Nine to three?
Nine to three, something like that, uh, let me see what they've proposed. It would be nine AM to four PM, they're actually listing it because they're allowing for the setup and take-down, and they're licensed and insured, uh, it's secure, uh, their, their specialists are trained to comply with federal privacy laws, they simply ask that there be no paper clips or, or staples, uh, it's convenient, they bring it to us, environmentally friendly, the estimated, uh, the estimate for services is for June 15th from nine to four, and that includes a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the rental of the mobile unit, and, um, two men at eighty-five dollars per hour for seven hours, they, uh, they've rounded to seven hundred and twenty dollars for the entire day. So-
Six hours too long?
That's what I was suggesting.
Well, we, we don't, yeah, I mean, we could shorten it up by that, I just wasn't sure-
I think eight till noon.
Yeah, I was thinking four, eight to noon.
That's fine, I just, I was trying to get some, something for it.
Right, yeah, that's what, um, so they would have to come at seven to set up, so it's right at eight o'clock.
I don't think there's a lot of setup, they'd pull up a truck and open up the doors.
Open up the back door and flip the machine on.
Yeah. But, uh, but they, we'd wanna set up a, you know, traffic pattern and such for people to pull up and, you know, then pull out, and not be crossing paths.
Yeah, that can, um-
So, you would like to see eight to noon?
Yes.
I would think eight to noon would be plenty of time.
Then I will get a quote, and I'm sure that, uh-
And did we also wanna, you know, I, last, uh, month, we talked about having working bikes also come and collect bikes?
I, I have not been in touch with them, there were some other things that came-
Do you want me to call them?
If you'd like, if you've got their, uh, information.
I, and I've worked with them before.
Oh, okay.
So, um-
That, that'd be great, I just started somewhere.
Yeah.
And I did notify TAC that we are intending to participate.
Okay, and then, uh, once it gets closer, we should probably have some of our, either newsletters or brochures or something.
Throwing it out there, maybe take an ad out.
Okay.
Or see if the Landmark will throw us some advertising for the event, I mean, it's a pretty nice event, I mean, you know.
Throw us some?
Well, if they don't throw us some, we'd have to take out-
An ad.
An ad, but maybe as the, you know, the people, well, if they drop off bikes, we can, you know, hand them a little postcard, "Thank you, this is what we provide."
Sure.
And, uh, what's the name of the bike?
Working bikes?
Working bikes, okay.
They're located in Chicago on Western Avenue, and, um, they provide, they take any bikes in any condition, so if you have the handlebars missing, the seats missing, tires missing-
They can, they can cannibalize it for parts.
They, you know, take it and either use it for parts or fix it, and they provide bikes to, uh, people in Chicago, Detroit, to get back and forth to work and overseas.
Okay.
Also, it's really, we did this a few years ago for the township, and, um, I wanna say we collected about a hundred bikes.
Wow.
Were you there?
Yeah, it was more than that, I think.
They had to actually make two trips, they come with this truck that they, you know, load bikes on any and every which way possible, you know?
Vertically, right.
And they had to, they actually had to make two trips.
Wow.
Well, that's great.
We had a real good turnout to that event.
We did.
Well, it's a work in progress, so, um, thank you for, if you can reach out to them, and I will reach out back to the shredding company, so that's just, I'm updating you on what we're, we're working with. Um, I also, um, let's see, then we had the incident of the broken, the burst pipe in the kitchen?
Wait, can I just add, uh, one more, they-
Was there another thing you wanted?
For, about this, then also that weekend is Father's Day weekend, so a lot of people might be cleaning out their garages-
Okay.
And stuff.
That's why the, the bike thing would be great.
Yeah, that's, okay, sorry.
No problem, I'm just trying to update you on what's going on. Uh, we did have, in the deep freeze, the second day, I awoke to a text picture of a big puddle in the lobby, which was quickly followed by a phone call from the fire chief that they're shutting the water down in the building, the water main, because we had two, two spots that their hot water supply to the kitchen, um, exploded, and unfortunately, it did quite a bit of damage in the village offices, which was right below it, so they are drying out, we've cooperated, we're working together, the village and the township, with Serve Pro, and they understand where the delineating marks are, what's ours, what's theirs, they've had drying equipment here ever since that day, Riverside Plumbing came out to repair the two breaks in the hot water pipe, I don't know how much we can do, we had left water running and we had left, uh, cabinets open, but it's a concrete and stone wall that got very, very cold in that, uh, it both had, it both, the cold both traveled from the outside, as well as there's like a shaft not too far from there that's just an open air shaft that is always very cold, so, we're gonna see if we can open up maybe a vent to that shaft to bring a little bit of more warmth into that area, but this was, you know, once in, once in so many years, these kinds of things sometimes happen, so that, that's been, uh, the front stairs are still being blocked off, uh, for regular access because there's cords and dryers, they had to open up the walls in the village offices, and last I heard yesterday, the fellow from Serve Pro suggested that they may have to open up the wall because that wall in the stairwell, which all the water came rushing down and is still showing a lot of moisture, despite the fact that there have been dehumidifiers and fans going in there for close to two weeks now. So, um, we'll, we will do with it what we need to do with it, they've taken out, um, the trim at, at the floor and so forth, so we'll have some repairs, and, um, both our insurance and the village's insurance have been out to inspect, and they've been in touch with Serve Pro as far as approving further activities and so forth, so, we'll see where that takes us. Uh, the Public Works Director wa- contacted me, uh, regarding the upcoming anniversaries of the township and possibly including an opening up of the cornerstone of the building, uh, where there is allegedly a time capsule, so he, he had some contacts, he's, uh, he reached out to some of those, and just earlier today, I received a, an email, um, where that, he was afraid it was gonna be a big project to do that, where you have to, you know, support and lift and all that kind of thing, apparently, it's no more than cutting into the mortar around it and slipping it out, it's not that big a deal, so, that's something we might wanna consider in our celebrations.
Do you know it's actually there?
No, we don't, uh, we could have Geraldo's vaults, for all we know, with nothing there.
Very treasure.
Jimmy Hoffa.
Jimmy Hoffa.
Right, that's where he is. Anyway, just to update you on what's going on, um, the handicap door opener, uh, in all of this extreme weather that we've had, just stopped working, it had worked sporadically and then it just coughed up its last breath, and so we had that repaired, and we've had an updated, a newer style control, so it shouldn't happen anymore. I think this is since the last meeting, the refrigerator that was just outside the kitchen on the second floor, which serves as a staging area for the events that we'll be holding, just died, that was why we had that one spoiled ham from the Christmas hams, it just sat in this warm fridge, so, um, we replaced that on sale, always on sale, so you'll find that in the warrants, and, um, the postcards to the seniors were, have been very effective, we've had commentary on it, we've had a lot of calls about some of the services mentioned there, we've had an uptick in participants in the exercise classes, we've had more calls for food pantry and for all the other services, we've had people come in for their temporary handicap tags for their cars and also, it's, it has been effective, so I'm very happy to report that. And, um, I attended the kickoff for the Hauser Food Drive that is going on this month, I- I hope that everybody in the, uh, in the sound of my voice supports that drive. It is still the single largest drive for the Salvation Army's pantry, and so they supply both the Salvation Army and they also supply us, and the young people come over here once a month, um, with the, the person who coordinates that, um, and it's been, it's been great. They always come just in the nick of time when I need to go out and purchase more stuff for the food pantry. So, that's kind of a, a rough cut of what's been going on in the past month. Are there any questions? Are there any trustees' reports?
The seniors are gonna do their senior social tomorrow. It's gonna be a Valentine's Day party, and, um, be right after exercise class. I'm gonna serve pizza and, um, some type of baked good, um, this weekend, and, um, Jerry Owen, who is the exercise instructor, also plays guitar. He's gonna play for about thirty minutes. It's gonna be our entertainment, and then we'll have the band, uh, switch back on Wednesday, March twentieth, as our first quarterly event.
Okay. The letter that you sent me also indicated that you were doing hearing?
Oh, right, yes.
Hearing testing?
There will be, uh, a gentleman coming from a place in Forest Park to do hearing testing.
And that will be in March?
Uh, that's, uh, the second Wednesday in March, which I also think is March thirteenth.
Right, so that'll be the same, uh, that, so they'll have actually two events in March? There will be that and then the, the program?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Just double-checking. Thank you. Any other reports?
Mental health report. I've got a couple of updates briefly. Tomorrow, we will be having our strategic planning and also our budget meeting all at the same time. Also, CSpar, uh, getting back to the, uh, us helping out our township residents, uh, this has taken a lot longer than I thought it ever would, but being that we are the first or only one in the state that is doing this, we, we, the, uh, WSSRA, uh, wants to make sure that we're doing things the right way. I don't blame them one bit. Our attorneys also chimed in with what they would like to see. The sad news is, is at this time, CSpar has declined our offer. They want us just to give them a flat grant of money, and, uh, we won't do that. That's not how it works. We wanna help out the township residents, not to give a flat grant. That's not what the Mental Health Board does. We are going to continue to negotiate with them. Tomorrow's meeting, we are going through the, hopefully, the final, uh, part of a social worker, uh, seeing what they wanna do with a social worker and the outreach there. So next month, I should have plenty of, uh, things to tell you about.
Very good. But WSSRA is still willing to...
WSSRA, we're, we're going. We're in, we're going. As a matter of fact, uh, I've had several calls, uh, from residents, and, uh, I'm real excited to see how that program works out. I think it's gonna work out fabulous.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for, uh, the work you're doing this.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Uh, okay. No other trustees' reports, then we have unfinished business. I have not updated because of the, uh, the other things that were going on. We have not updated the budget yet, but I'll be working on it as, uh, as I'm getting some of these folks and things for different events. So, um, I don't know if you wanna schedule another meeting. At this point, maybe not until, hopefully for the March regular board meeting, I'll have some updated numbers so that we can consider on the, on the budget then, because then we will want to have the hearing. Usually, we typically have it just before the annual meeting, the hearing, then we have the annual meeting, and then we approve the budget at the regular meeting following the annual meeting. So that would be in April.
So, do we have, do we need another budget meeting to discuss this?
We might, but right now, I don't have anything, you know, for you, because we're still working on some of these numbers.
Well, we had that special budget meeting. I think we pretty much settled most everything.
I think so. I think we, you know, we know what direction we wanna go in, so now it's a matter of my plugging in the numbers in that area. So until I have some numbers to plug in, and hopefully for the March meeting, I'll, I can do that. And then if, at that point, we think we need to have some further discussion, we could schedule some of that.
And we're still considering going under the CPI at this time.
Right.
That's right. Okay, good.
Okay. I mean, that's, well, that, actually, that would be levy rather than...
The levy, right.
Right, so... Okay, yes, we only, we went with the one and a half, I think.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm. Um, then we have the, um, for your information, well, we have the Township Day, um, that's still in the folder. Let's see. Township Officials of Illinois. We have educational programs coming up, so please let us know if you are interested in participating in these. These are the, uh, Better Part of the Day, uh, programs. And then you also have information about, um, the Annual Township Officials of Illinois Annual Township Topics Day. And that takes place on April third, and that is a day in Springfield where we, uh, the Township Officials of Illinois gather, um, lunch, talk about talking points, and then go talk to our legislators.
I would like to attend the, uh, Topics Day. Should I fill out this form, or is Andrew gonna do a, uh, sign-up genius?
Um, I think he's gonna, he hasn't already done that one, has he? I think it, you will get it.
Oh, wait, I think he's...
I think you might have already gotten it.
Okay.
So please respond to that, and then we'll get it taken care of. All right? Then we are up to the approval of warrants.
Yeah, I make a motion that the board authorize and ratify, uh, payments of bills identified in the general warrants, uh, in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and three dollars and thirty-five cents, as presented on the board today.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Drapka, second by trustee Clark, to approve the general warrants in the total amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and three dollars and thirty-five cents, and clerk Blau, would you call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
If motion is carried.
I make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment in the amounts as, uh, utility warrant of eight, eighteen hundred seventy-five dollars and five cents, payroll in the amount of twenty-one thousand fifty-eight dollars and seventy-two, seventy-seven cents, health warrant in the amount of thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars ninety-eight cents, general assistance warrant in the amount of three thousand five hundred, township radio players in the amount of two hundred, food pantry warrant in the amount of five hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Highlandbach, to pay the following warrants. Utility warrant in the amount of eighteen hundred seventy-five dollars and five cents, the payroll warrant in the amount of twenty-one thousand fifty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents, the health warrant in the amount of one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents, the general assistance warrant in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars, the township radio players warrant in the amount of two hundred dollars, the food pantry warrant in the amount of five hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Clerk Blau, would you call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn this beautiful meeting.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Drapka, second by trustee Clark, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. And those of you who would like a photo, this is the opportunity. We'll, we'll make a big check.
Big checks. We love big checks.